So I will call this meeting to order. This is the December 1st, 2020 regular meeting in Manatees Springs City Council. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So Judy, if you'll display the American flag, please.
Just a second here.
Okay.
Move a few things around on a very small screen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Okay, the city clerk would please call the roll?
Yes. Town council members, Judith Chandler.
Present.
Steve Bremner.
Yeah.
John Shada. Susan Wilbrook.
Here.
Julie Wolf.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nancy Fortune.
Present.
And Mayor John Graham.
Present. Thank you. Okay, so our first item of business is to approve the agenda. I think we've all had an opportunity to see it, so I would entertain a motion. Counselor Wolf?
My motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Can we have a second from Counselor Chandler? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Great, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next item is public comment on non-agenda items. Judy, do we have anyone in the audience?
Okay, I would just ask anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on something that is not on the agenda to use the raise hand tool. And I have not received any correspondence via email or phone prior to this, but at this point, it doesn't look like there's any hands going up.
Thank you. Move on to the consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar tonight. First is reappointment of myself for another one-year sentence to the Pike's Peak Rural Transportation Authority for 2021. Reappointment of Roy Rosenthal to the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments Community Advisory Committee. Approval of the November 17, 2020 regular meeting minutes. And the fourth item is agreement for professional services between the City of Manatees, for the City of Manatees Springs zoning code project. There are no objections. I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Wolf?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second from Counselor Wilbrook. All in favor say aye.
I have a quick question, Mayor. Just a procedural question. I was wondering if we shouldn't pull number three off and vote on it separately, just because I wasn't able to attend that meeting, and I should recuse myself from that particular vote. So your, you know, your input, I'm not sure how we handle that.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, okay. And certainly if any one council member has reservations about the consent calendar, we will pull that off and entertain it separately. And I would suggest that we entertain that immediately following approval of the rest consent calendar.
Very good.
So then, if we would have a motion then to approve the consent calendar with removal of item three. Counselor Wolf?
So I'm going to amend my motion to approve the consent calendar, one, two, and four at the moment. And then we can vote separately on number three because of Judith's concerns. Is that okay?
It sounds good. Yes, thank you. And then Counselor Wilbrook, second stat. Okay, so all in favor of the motion to approve the consent calendar minus item three, which we'll discuss immediately after. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll consider the approval of the November 17, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Counselor Wolf?
Move to approve.
We move approval. Do we have a second? Mayor Pro Tem seconds. Nancy, you're muted, but I saw your hand raised. Okay, so all in favor of approving the November 17, 2020 regular meeting minutes as written, say aye. Aye. And we have six in favor and.
And I'll.
Okay.
One abstention.
Abstention, yes. All right, thank you. Moving right along. Okay, so item G1 hearings. Tonight, we have a second hearing and public hearing for ordinance number 1420, an ordinance adopting the annual budget and appropriating funds for the fiscal year 2021 and amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2020. Okay, I believe to start off, we have Becca from Finance who can bring us up to date on any recent changes or anything she feels that we should be aware of. We have discussed this, obviously, in some detail previously. Becca, you have the floor. Thank you.
Yes, this is the same budget that was presented for the first reading except for the changes that was the city council amended the first reading for, which was to add 755,000 to the URA sales tax increment for 2021. And that the original amount was a million four thirty plus the seven fifty-five, which is half, which is forecasted to be half the amount of the URA TIF for 2020, which, as I'm sure we all remember, it was retained by the city due to the COVID. But due to the city's vigilance on watching everything it spent, we did not spend this money, and therefore, half of it's going to the URA per their request, and the other half has been approved by city council to be transferred over to the capital improvements fund for capital improvements. Other than that, the budget's the same. The ending fund balance is forecast for 2021 is forecasted to be a million eight ninety-three, three seventy-three, which is nineteen point nine nine six percent of the operating expenditures of the general fund.
Thank you, Becca. Very good. Well, if there's are no objections, I'll open up the public hearing portion of this meeting. This is a public hearing. Judy, if, I don't know if we have anyone who's expressed an interest in speaking?
We do. Bob Todd had asked to speak, so I will grant that at this point.
Okay, bring Mr. Todd over and.
Mr. Todd, if you'd. You have the floor to speak on the budget.
Yeah, and Mr. Todd, before you start, if you would give us your address and just a couple of guidelines, if you could keep your remarks to about three minutes or less, that would be great. Thank you, sir. You have the floor?
Okay, good evening. Bob Todd, 28, Manatee Terrace. It's good to see you all. I admire Denise and her red blazers. Got to be awfully cozy out there in the woods tonight. I'll need that for next quarter. Just a very brief comment, just as a member of the public, over the past years, starting in 2018, council elected to withhold money from, in various amounts, from the URA, the taxes earned there. And I'd like to just emphasize that this balance of 1.8 million that Rebecca mentioned reflects the fact that in 2021, the URA will be getting their tax receipts remitted from the city back to the URA. As a member of the public, I hadn't quite entirely followed that. Today, city finance staff very diligently and quickly helped confirm that with me, but I thought that should be part of the visible record. It's really the biggest kind of line item that's always been in play. Like to end my remarks by saying to Becca and to her team, again, with the cooperation of her peers, her department heads, city council, the city administrator oversight, the finance group did a fantastic and improved and meaningful budget cycle for the city council to adopt as their plan 2021. I certainly hope that the nation's economy and COVID do not play any further havoc with the city's budget and wish you all luck with that. Counsel, it's your budget. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the public who would like to speak on this subject?
I've had no other hands go up.
Yeah. So I will go ahead and declare the public hearing port, public comment portion of this public hearing closed, and we can move into if council members have any questions for Becca or city staff. It looks like we're pretty content with where we've gotten to. So, all right. Denise, you have a remark?
I just want to make a comment that I want to echo Bob Todd's comments that Becca and the finance staff and all the department heads, this is the best budget book I've ever seen. And I've talked to other cities that have used Open Gov, and they've really struggled with it. And so I do want to give recognition to all the department heads and the finance department for putting together this amazing budget book. So, good job.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or discussion, I think we could entertain a motion. Mayor Pro Tem?
Sure. I move that we pass ordinance number 1420 and ordinance adopting the annual budget and appropriating funds for fiscal year 2021 and amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2020 on second reading. I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Chandler. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And to reiterate Denise's remarks, thank you to the staff for doing really a very fine job of putting the budget together. And then perhaps some of this even trickier is to keep that budget in line. That was a very admirable job of managing our resources. Everyone is to be commended, especially Becca. Thank you. Okay. Next item, item H1, consideration of resolution number 3420, a resolution establishing a general tax levy for the purpose of raising revenue for the general operating fund and the voter approved mill levies for other funds of the City of Manatees Springs. And again, I believe we will be calling on Becca to start us off.
You're muted, Becca.
Becca, you're muted.
Darn it. Okay, this is something that has to be done every year before December 15. And December 15 is the deadline to certify the mill levy with El Paso County, and the city has to approve the mill levy, the tax levy before it's certified to the county. The general fund is at 10.594, and then we have these various other funds at these small amounts. And the only one that really changes is that refunds and abatements. And if you notice, the certification evaluation, which is a document I fill out to actually certify, the. The mill levy is a little bit different for the refund abatement. It's 3,795 as opposed to the assessment value that this, the El Paso County sends us. And the reason why is because I can only go out three digits from the decimal point, you know, to the right. So, I mean, if you actually do the math, it comes out to point zero five four eight, but I can only go out three digits, and I cannot raise it above the amount we're actually getting. If I could go out all the way, then we would be recovering all of it. But since I can't, and I, if I go to point zero five five, then it comes out to 3,854, which is a little bit above the amount, no, wait, 3,865, excuse me, which is a little bit above the amount, then I have to just go to point zero five four, which is about $61 less. Just in case anyone else did the math, and they're like, wait a minute, this is $61 less. What the heck? Why aren't we getting all our refund and abatement? Well, it's because I can only go out three digits.
So Becca knows this budget inside and out.
Okay, well, that's a.
So we're ending up with a mill levy entirely for all the general fund and the various other funds, the Beckers of Paso, capital improvements, open space. It's coming out to 13.004, which should raise 913,906.
Thank you. Thank you. Council members, do you have questions for Becca or any of city staff?
Well, Becca answered the only question I had about the $61, so I'm good.
Well, okay. Right. Well, if there, if there are no other questions or comments, I think we could go ahead and entertain a motion. Mayor Pro Tem?
Sure. I move to approve Resolution 3420, resolution establishing a general tax levy for the purpose of raising revenue for the general operating fund and the voter approved mill levies for the other funds for the City of Manatees Springs.
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Shada. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Bremner, you're voting aye, I believe. That's an affirmative. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Becca, thank you very much.
I'm still on.
It's okay. Okay. Second business item is first reading of ordinance number 1720, an ordinance amending Title VII of the Manatee Springs Municipal Code to move animal-related fees from the municipal code to a fee schedule. Becca, do you want to start with that?
Yes. So I believe I recently gave you the history on our universal fee schedule. Was it a city council meeting, anything before Thanksgiving seems like 10,000 years ago? Anyway, every now and then, we still find some amounts in the code. And I think I mentioned that at the time, and this is one of those cases. It's the animal code, and there's a couple of little fees and couple of fines still in there. The fees are going to be moved over to the universal fee schedule, and the fines are actually captured by a fine schedule that the judge establishes. So, and it's the potbelly pig license, which my understanding is we have one in the city, and then exotic animal permit fee. I don't know if we have any of those at all. Humane Society handles those for us. Then there is the two fines, the dog at large fine and the dog or cat not having a rabies vaccine fine. So we're pulling these out like we've done with everything else, and hopefully this is the end. No guarantees, but hopefully this is the end of actual amounts in our code. Because this way, we can just change it by resolution and not by ordinance every time we want to change the amount that we charge for a potbelly pig license.
Thank you. Counselors, do you have any questions or comments for Becca or for staff?
I have a question.
Yeah, Counselor Wolf?
Becca, do you have any insight on the reasonableness of the potbelly pig fee? Should we reevaluate that?
I believe when we discussed it with the Humane Society, they were the one that recommended the amount that we've now put into the fee schedule. So I think it did change a little bit. I think it's now changed to match the dog and cat. So it is a little more than it was.
And do llamas count as exotic animals?
Or do they count as farm animals? That's a good question, and maybe one we should pursue deeper. But I'm afraid that's not a.
You don't have to put it at the top of the things to do list. I was just curious because there used to be a potbelly pig that lived on my street, and he was quite the sight.
I can imagine.
There's actually a definition of exotic animals in your code. If you want me to tell you what it says.
Please.
It's any animal not commonly domesticated or not common to North America, or irrespective of geographic origin, an animal of wild or predatory, predatory nature. So I don't think llamas are common to North America.
But they're not predatory. Thank goodness. Gosh, can you imagine?
There's a lot of oars in there. So I actually think that they probably would count as an exotic animal.
Well, the reason I ask is because we have llamas in town that get walked down the sidewalk on their leashes now and then for a public display or just to go for a little stroll. So that's the only exotic animal I've ever noticed in town.
Hmm, good question. Interesting. I've seen someone walking around with a macaw on their shoulder. But I don't know if that's considered an exotic animal since it's a bird.
Heard it Jeff Parker.
We have other questions or comments from council? Looks like we're pretty satisfied with this. Any comments from staff? I guess not.
Can always put code enforcement on to the llama walkers.
Only llama, yeah, the only llama I know got rid of his llamas a couple of years ago. So.
Oh, maybe I'm out of date.
Yeah.
I'm willing to move to approve for first reading ordinance 1720.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Chandler. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks again, Becca. Okay. So item three, first reading of ordinance number 1520, an ordinance vacating a portion of the Fairview Avenue right-of-way adjacent to the property known as 515 Ruxton Avenue, City of Manatees Springs, El Paso County, Colorado. And I believe we have Michelle Anthony to discuss this for us. So if we could bring Michelle in. We've got Michelle.
Hi, everybody.
Hi. Who wants to start off, Michelle or Christine?
I think Christine and I had talked about it, and I'm, I'm taking this one. So this is for a request for vacation of an undeveloped portion of Fairview Avenue. Fairview is a residential street that comes off Ruxton, and in this area, this is the very western part of Fairview. As part of the COGS. Planning requirements, the major conditional use required that they plat the property that the train operation is on, on the southern side of Ruxton. When their surveyors were working on surveying for that replat, they discovered that some of the cog improvements had, were actually located in Fairview in this area. And so the cog actually does own platted lots that are on either side of Fairview in this area. And so we looked at it and said that the vacation of this area of right-of-way made sense and required that they go through that process so that all of their improvements can actually be on their own property. Through this process, I noted that actually Fairview, as originally platted, used to circle on around, passed this, this area of proposed vacation, and went through the, what's now the cog property, and connected back with Ruxton. That was, that area that was, used to be within what we now know as the cog property, was vacated many years ago. I think it's actually more than 100 years ago. And so there is no potential for Fairview to connect back through to Ruxton. And as I mentioned, the cog owns the property on either side of this area that's proposed for vacation. And the actual developed portion of Fairview is quite a ways east, if you will, of, of this area that's proposed for vacation. So planning commission looked at this at their meeting on November 12. And they recommended unanimously approval of the vacation as requested to the city council based on the circumstances that I've outlined. And with the findings that are noted in the notice of recommendation that was provided in your packet, and that are also reflected in the text of the proposed vacation ordinance. So the, the recommendation from staff and planning commission is approval of the vacation and approval on first reading of vacation ordinance 1520. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions? Mr. Bremner?
Is there a map in the packet that shows where this is? I think a visual would be good, because I'm trying to figure out where you're talking about.
Sure. If you look at, if you look at the vacation ordinance, and you scroll down to, I think, the third and fourth page, those have the area of the proposed vacation.
So which, which?
Page 197. Page 197 of our packet. Michelle, could you bring up the map? Could you share your screen and bring up the map so you could show it there?
Well, I'll see if I can. I've actually never done that. So.
Oh, I see the map now.
Okay.
Okay. I can do it if you want to see that. Does this account with the council like me to bring that up on the screen?
Yeah, if you could, Judy, that'd be nice.
Thanks, Judy.
Great, thanks.
So if you can see, on the left side of this page of Exhibit B, you can see the formerly vacated Fairview Avenue, where this, the crosshatched area is what's being requested for vacation. And you can see some of the encroachment from the buildings that are getting into Fairview and along there, and how close the larger train shed comes. I think actually there's an area of, maybe an area of rail, actual rails that, that actually cuts across the end of Fairview as well. And so the developed portion of Fairview, if you see where the termination of the vacation is, upper in the upper right corner of this exhibit, Lot 8, which is the next one past, the proposed vacation is owned by Colorado Springs Utilities. They own a number of lots up there as well. And then the developed area is maybe, oh, I don't know, quarter mile, eighth of a mile from this vacation area. So there's quite an area for this area, the size of this area. There's quite a bit of gap between what's actually developed and even this proposed vacation. There's still undeveloped right-of-way that's, that remains.
So let me ask you this. Is this like a historical Fairview Avenue? Because this is not the Fairview Avenue that I know.
Yeah, this is, this was platted many, many, many years ago in the Iron Springs Company Edition. So it just never has been developed over the years. And frankly, with the cog and Colorado Springs Utilities owning a lot of the lots in this area, I think one of the reasons that it, I know one of the reasons the cog purchased a lot of the lots was that they didn't want to have houses necessarily developed that close to the, to the train.
Okay, I think I understand now.
Do we have additional questions for city staff? Apparently not. Well, no further questions or comments. I guess we're ready for a motion then. Counselor Wolf, I think you're.
Oh, thank you. I'll move to approve ordinance 1520 on first reading to vacate a portion of Fairview.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem looked like it was almost a tie. Do we have a second? Now, we have, okay, Mayor Pro Tem, Fortune seconds. Okay, so we have motion a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel, and everybody have a nice rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, item four, resolution number 3520. Okay, item four, uh, resolution number three, five, two, zero, a resolution in recognition and support for the Keith Herring Fitness Court Public Art Program and Project. And I believe we have three presenters on this subject. Uh, I think Becca Sickbert, Natalie Johnson, and Delane Brevnik. And I'm not sure who wants to go first. But Judy, if you could bring all three of them over, if that's possible.
Hi, um, I guess maybe I'll start.
Okay, Delane?
Yeah, so I'm President of the Manitou Springs Arts Council. About a month ago, I was contacted by the National Fitness Campaign Director. Manitou Springs was identified as one of one hundred communities throughout the United States. To be the first to have a art fitness court. So what, what this is, is a licensed Keith Herring project. Um, I don't know if you guys know Keith Herring well, but he is one of the major artists of the um, twentieth century. He's up there with Andy Warhol. He passed away of HIV AIDS in, I think it was nineteen ninety. And Manitou Springs um, is incredibly honored by being selected as one of the possible um, communities um, to get this. It's a, it's hugely prestigious and there will only be ten communities, um, out of all the ones that are being considered, ten communities across the United States to get one of these fitness courts. And we are already um, in the third step of this process, which is basically submitting an official application. So what's before you right now is a um, resolution in support of the uh, Keith Herring Fitness uh, Court. I think in the package you have the um, site analysis that was put together for us. Uh, do you want to, do you want me to go through that with you or um? If you have any questions, I can answer them directly.
Delane, maybe since, since we're expecting Beck and Natalie to also uh, chime in here, maybe uh, we'll let them do that and then we'll enter, we'll present our, our questions to all three of you, if that sounds fair.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, great. Who would like to go next? Natalie or Becca?
It really matters. So Delane is the lead on this project. Um, Beck and I are definitely um, supporting his efforts, um, helping him navigate. You know, just uh, sort of different, different aspects of this so that we're successful. But without a doubt, um, this will be a public art piece that would be something that would be an arts council project.
Thank you, council, for considering this. Um, I would just add from the perspective of the creative district that yes, it is an incredible honor to even be considered the amount of research that is reflected in the presentation and and to be able to apply it all really speaks to the Manitou Springs community and everything that we offer at the intersection of embracing arts, health and wellness, and the fact that we have made it this far so quickly says a lot about the community just as a whole.
Thank you. I guess at this point, it would be appropriate to ask council for questions and comments. Anyone want to start off?
I, I have. Um, Nancy, you had her hand up first.
Okay, all right. So Nancy will go with you and then follow with Judith.
No, I was just gonna say it's a fairly short presentation and I wouldn't mind. I, I think it might be useful if Delane went through it quickly to give us a little background because this is a very I, I'd never heard of it before. So um, I'm kind of intrigued and have a couple of potential concerns. So I kind of like to hear the, hear the briefing.
Maybe Judith, you go ahead and bring it up on the screen there so that Delane will be able to walk it through it, walks through that. Counselor Chandler, did you want to make a remark at this point?
Well, we're, we're of one mind tonight. I, I was gonna ask the same thing. I, I'm familiar with the artist, but not the, the project. And I also have some questions and concerns, um, particularly around slide. I believe it's on page two oh seven. Memorial and Shriver and Fields. Uh, one of my questions would be, are these, would these be the only three locations that you're considering? And also, um, just other, other issues that we can bring up later, such as, you know, long-term maintenance, et cetera. But I, I do agree with Nancy that I would love to just have you go through the presentation briefly. I'm very intrigued.
Cool. So I, I see the slide up. They put this together for us. So they've done their research. Uh, so the first slide, of course, is, is the archway. Second one. Second slide shows, um, some of the stages of evaluation. Um, it says it talks about the data sets that they put together, um, site analysis of pedestrian activity. So if we go to the next, um, next slide. So these are some of the three uh, major uh, criterion that they looked at. Uh, they, they're looking for iconic sites across the country. That's why there's only going to be ten. Um, will be, if, if Manitou is successful, will be the only one in Colorado. Uh, we're competing probably against Colorado Springs, Aspen, Denver. So we're chosen as one of the potential iconic sites, which is, which is amazing. They're looking at accessibility, uh, specifically pedestrian accessibility and connectivity. Uh, quick, if we go to the next slide. So this is a, a heat map of pedestrian use. So all the white areas, um, are like the highest area of pedestrian activity. So this is, this is not like car car activity. It's, it's all pedestrians. Um, so if, if we go to the next, next slide. Um, they looked at other criterion besides pedestrian use. Um, they looked at interactivity. So you can see that in the activity network, they looked at popu- uh, population density, uh, they looked at income equality. So those are the, the two the three other things that they were evaluating, which is again, pretty remarkable, the depth that they've gone into, um, like researching our, our community. If we go to the next slide, activity analysis. This just shows the, um, the walkability, the ten-minute walkability radius. So you can see the, the three different sites there with the ten-minute walkability. If you go to the next, next slide. So these are the three sites that they identified, um, as ideal locations, um, anywhere in those, in those areas, Memorial Park, Shriver Park, Fields Park. And they use the criterion that we just looked at to, to identify these, these three places. Um, if you go to the next slide. This is the pedestrian use heat map of those three places in order of use. So you can see Memorial Park has the, the most amount of pedestrian activity surrounding it. Shriver a little bit less, and then Fields, um, the least. If we go to the next slide, we can see the Keith Herring iconic uh, art. So basically, it's a mural on this uh, fitness court. Piece of hardware, I guess, I guess you can call it. It's a, it's considered an art project. And art and fitness is an amazing combination and it's a obvious one for, for Manitou Springs. So um, they did their, their homework and they found us and they're like, yeah, Manitou, it's known for art and fitness. So it'd be, it'd be so cool if we can get this. Um, the next slide. Next slide shows some of the options that the ten communities will have to choose um, of the different Keith Herring uh, art pieces, art murals, art styles. Uh, you can see that there's quite a variety. So, um, if we're chosen as one of the ten sites, we'll get to select among this group. Okay, the next slide. They're gonna help with, uh, with fundraising. So they will help, um, the Arts Council, uh, the Creative District and the Art Center, um, sort of like pull money together to, to get this built. Um, one of the things they're looking at, um, as contribution from, from the city is a concrete slab, which is about uh, ten thousand dollars. We're not that far yet. We're not sure, um, if we'll, we'll get there, but the concrete slab was specifically mentioned as something that the, the city can kick in, um, as, as a contribution, as, as their contribution. Next slide. This one shows, um, existing fitness courts throughout the country. The art fitness court is the first one that actually has, um, licensed art, um, from a, a major artist on it. So this is the first combination of art and fitness. Uh, so when they roll this out, um, it'll be the first year. And again, if we can, if we can get this, it'd be amazing. Uh, next one. So that's just our, uh, application deadline, which is Friday. This has been going super fast. Um, like I said, they contacted me about a month ago. And we already got through to the stage of being actually invited to, to apply. Not all of the communities that they contacted uh, were invited to actually submit an application. Uh, next step, next slide. So there we are. Uh, we're, we're already at number three. Um, it re, the National Fitness Court released, um, the application for us. They found that it was appropriate. And, um, after we submit the application, hopefully we'll, we'll be at number four. And this was just their, their final slide. Um, Memorial Park. It is an iconic location. I think everybody can agree. Okay, uh, Becca and Natalie, if you have anything to add, um, wanna jump in?
To briefly speak in support for, um, a, a major public art installation, both for the publicity, the prestigiousness of the award, the chance to once again shout from the mountaintop that Manitou Springs is a unique community that really values accessibility and health and wellness for all of its citizens. This would be a permanent asset and a public art piece.
I'm gonna jump in real quick and say, uh, we did speak with Christine, and if she's still available, um, if she's still around, um, it'd be great to hear, hear her. But, um, when we were talking with Christine, she, she had this remarkable, uh, comment that said, um, she said like, rarely has she ever seen a project that's so, hey, there you are. Can, can you say, can you mention what you said about how rare, um, this project is?
I did, I did. I was really excited about this project, um, not only from the city's perspective, but this is my sixth and final year on the board for the cultural office for the Pike Peak region. And we're always looking for projects that really truly can embody art and the community. And it is very, very difficult to find something like this. And, uh, as I went through this and, um, had some opportunity to really talk with Delane and hear about it, I did, I shared with him. I said, you know, this is one of the few projects I've seen that truly can embody all that Manitou is from art to, um, gender equity, LGBTQ plus rights, health and fitness, and be that iconic, um, uh, object, if you will, or infrastructure for the community. So I did. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Delane, did you have another remark there?
Nope. Uh, Natalie, did you want to add anything?
Natalie, uh, you're, okay.
Yeah, no, I, I think everyone's covered everything. Um, I just think that as you saw that deadline for the application is December fourth, this is Friday. So um, we would love to be here with you today to have done a lot more community engagement and reached out to a number of organizations. But at this point, it's like we just, we're gonna need to just apply and then do some of that community work after.
All right. So I think we can go into entertain some questions from council and staff. I think Counselor Wolf had her hand up first. Julie?
Oh, just wondered, thank you, if you folks could give us some ideas of the size of this thing. I realize there's different options, but I'm guessing they're all roughly the same, take up the same mass.
Yeah.
How big is this?
Thirty-two feet by thirty-two feet.
So it's about half of a tennis court.
And then if this is approved and we get this, then does Manitou have the right to decide which of those three identified locations would be the perfect site for it? Or do they mandate that?
That's a good question. Um, they found these three sites. I think in the application, um, we can only put down two possibilities. There was a preference for, for Memorial Park and you, you saw that in the site analysis, um, of the, the pedestrian heat map, the ten-minute walkability of bubble. Of course, the location next to public transportation, you know, the shuttle, the bus, um, and of course, the proximity to, to the MAC, um, to the actual Art Center. So that would be the number one choice, but we do have, um, we do have a second choice.
Yeah, but I, my question is who's we? In other words, is it up to us or is it up to them or you're not sure?
So it's, it's certainly up to us. Um, but what happens is that if we are selected, then they will actually send people out here. And then we'd actually, that's when we would be walking the sites, looking at the locations, talking to other members of the community, and then bringing in different planning department pair of all those folks. And so even in the application, it says proposed sites. So up to this point, um, everything is speculative. They do not require that we have a site selected for the application.
Thank you.
Several hands up. Um, Steve, I, or I think Steve had his hand up first, uh, a little bit ago. Um, Steve, do you still have a question?
So it's thirty-two by thirty-two feet and then it's got some sort of, uh, exercise things in there or, or what, what, what exactly is in there and I guess, you know, that's my question. What, what are the exercises? Is it like chin-up bars or what?
Yeah, um, most of the stuff, uh, doesn't move, so it's, it's very solid, um, kind of maintenance-free there. There, there are platforms, there are bars that you can do, um, pull-ups. There's, I don't know if you guys remember, this kind of dates me, but like in the seventies, I think was the first time these, these fitness courts came out. And I think probably everybody remembers, you know, the, the wooden, um, you know, spots in, in parks, you know, along running trails where you could stop and do, do pull-ups or, or push-ups. This is basically the, the high-tech, um, indestructible version of one of these uh, fitness courts. And it'll, it'll have a program with it. Kind of like have, teach people what, what kind of exercises they can do on it.
Right, and that's good because part of the problem with those exercise things from the seventies is they, a lot of them just deteriorated because people you know, didn't maintain them or they didn't have an interest in them. And, and so now they're just sort of there.
Yeah.
And everything.
After five years, um, they're going to kind of like look at the court again. So we, we have this official license from the Keith Herring Art Program for five years. Um, after that time, they don't want it to look shabby. Um, they'll come back and, um, make sure that everything looks good. And I guess we'll have to like reapply after the, after five years.
Oh, so they could take it away after five years if they don't, if they want to?
They could take away the Keith Herring brand. That we would still own, we would own the, the actual fitness court. But we may, if we, if we chose to keep it and not continue to go through their process, we could put, we could wrap it in, in art by a, a local artist or do another sort of competitive, um, artistic call.
And what's the timeframe for finding out their ultimate decision? Do we know?
Do you know? Oh.
Uh, I, I, I think by the end of December, uh, we'll, we'll hear. And then the process, um, of raising the money starts in January. So it's, it's going pretty fast. And, um, basically our deadline to actually have it up and running is, is September.
And then we don't raise the money, they raise the money?
Yeah, so they have a whole team, uh, that puts together partnerships. Um, some of the big ones are, are hospitals, hotel, I mean, uh, hospital partnerships, health and wellness. hospital partnerships, health and wellness. You guys, Becca, do you remember with the the major hotel, I mean?
Right. Yeah, thanks, Delaine. It tends to be a collaborative effort. So the fundraising would be collaborative in nature. That would be the three of us combined, working with community health partners and others who are interested in seeing this public art installation that also serves a wellness goal come to life.
Counselor Chandler, you have a question?
I have, yeah, a couple of questions. I know this has been asked a couple of different ways, but since they've done some pretty extensive site evaluations, again, I'm assuming that if this were, if they were to choose Manitou, what they're saying is they would want it in one of three of these locations and not, they wouldn't consider another location. It would be in Memorial, Shriver, or Fields. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the result of their their analysis. Because we are competing against other communities, they want to make sure that this thing lands in a heavily pedestrian trafficked, networked ideal location.
I can certainly understand. And the the slide that has the 200,000 plus the concrete slab, am I correct? And and you're saying that we would be we would be providing the concrete slab and they would be providing the 200,000 to build it?
They would like the city to provide the concrete slab. I did mention that things are pretty tight. Often when you raise money, and I think Becca and Natalie can speak to this more articulately, but often when you raise money, the organizations like to see like the city kick in something, you know, like they like to see some kind of investment.
And my last question is, but but well, so just going back to that, but there, but they're, but what you're saying is they they are going to fundraise the $200,000 amount that they're saying it would take to build the structure.
They'll help us fundraise it. Us meaning this creative district, the Arts Council, and the MAC.
Okay. And and that is the cost of it? $200,000?
Yeah.
Plus, plus around 10,000 for the slab? Okay. And my last question is regarding maintenance and safety. So if they're coming back in about five years, like, you know how things break, do you have any data on on typical maintenance costs of in the interim upkeep of the thing or have there been any, you know, issues with injuries or anything like that? I mean, there's, there's, there's quite a bit of I mean, it's really interesting looking. I'm trying to visualize it in one of those three areas. That this is a, this is a fitness court for pretty much all ages?
Yeah, accessibility.
Accessibility is a big deal.
Yeah.
But so anyway, so ongoing maintenance would be other than the five-year, we would be responsible for that.
Yes. So basically, we're using the the agreement that the Arts Council has had with the city for well over a decade for our Art in the Avenue program. And that is that all of the public art is covered by city insurance. And city does things like, you know, power washes a sculpture if it gets tagged. So the basic maintenance that happens on public art in Manitou is taken care of city works.
Excellent. And also, what we would be approving tonight is just the support of us, you going forward with the application. Is that basically what we're doing tonight?
Yeah. So I think everybody sees the resolution. I don't think we need to read through it, or do you want to hear it?
No, I know I've read it. I just want to make sure that that that, just to make clear that it's not the actual structure, it's the the support of moving forward with the application.
Yeah, so this is an important piece of to help us strengthen the application, you know, having this resolution from City Council puts us in a much stronger position.
And those are all my questions. Thank you.
Denise had her hand up. So Denise?
Yeah, I just want to bring up, Delane brought this, but a couple, maybe a week and a half ago to me, and we were talking about how to inform everybody and get the the public involved. And luckily, this meeting happened right here because it's due on December 4th, and they're working diligently to get this application in because it's such a great opportunity. But they also, they're reaching out to Parab, and they're going to be presenting to other groups so that they're informed too. And then there's going to have to be a community outreach and and community support. So they'll be working on that whole communication plan and getting it out. It's just happened so quickly. And the fact that we went from 100 to 50 in like two days, I think it was, because the last I heard was we were at 100, and then Delane and they called and said, we made the 50. And I'm like, okay, we got to bring planning in, and we've got to have a conversation, and we got to get, you know, city council. So it is moving very quickly, but they do have a, they're working on a communication plan to get it out and to communicate with the other groups.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. So questions. One is, you said it's it's we'd have to enter, the Arts Council would enter into a licensing agreement or or who who? What's this license?
Yeah. So as a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), the Arts Council is the one officially making, submitting this application.
I think the licensing is has to do with ownership of the artwork. So us being able to have the Keith Haring brand would be, there'd be a license, but the ultimately, everything would be city property. So the license would be with the city. The the application is coming from the Arts Council, but
Okay, are there obligations with that license other than?
I can't, I mean, I think it's going to be, I mean, I'm guessing, right? It's going to be things like, we can't add Manitou Springs to the top of it. We can't, you know, that, I mean, it's going to be respecting the work as a piece of
Okay. And have have you guys heard from other cities that actually have one of these and how they've been received and used and so on?
That's a good question. On their, on the website, actually, if you go to nationalfitnesscampaign.com/news, they have like videos of of all the different communities that have these fitness courts. I think one of the most recent ones was in Longmont, in just outside of Denver. So there's an opportunity to check out what these communities see or feel about the courts. It's of course
Thing to do to find out how it's how it's been received, if it is actually used as a fitness, you know, how how the community has received it or not. You know, obviously, you've addressed it a couple of times, but I am concerned about it not having been to Parab, to my knowledge. I don't know if the chamber is on board, Becca, with this. Julia Wright, if you're looking at Memorial Park, you better talk with Julia Wright about it. So I am concerned about the community receipt of this because it's not, it's an unusual structure. And the dollars, raising the dollars. So it sounds like you'd be going to hosp- or hospitals or insure, health insurance companies and so on. Will you be going to our own community?
Ideally, there would be nonprofits in our community who who stepped forward. Again, they like to see sort of like local involvement to local support.
Sure. In kind, in kind is great. My concern is, is that everybody is so strapped right now that to fundraise $200,000 in Manitou, I think, is unreasonable. I have no problem with the 10K for the the concrete pad. I think that's reasonable in kind, but to fundraise 200K within our community, I just don't think is realistic right now.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't mean like Manitou specifically. I was thinking of like El Pamar, the Vreidenberg, sort of organizations like that.
Okay. Springs Health Foundation. Yeah.
Um. Okay, that's basically my questions. The only, the only thing I would say is reading the resolution on section one, because I had a similar concern, how locked in we are once we set, sign this resolution. The application and project that we support the application and project, and you can interpret that a couple of ways. I think the application is perfectly appropriate. I'm not sure if we're ready to support the project. And I am very concerned about the location. And if you have to have it in by the application by the fourth Friday, I guess, and you have to narrow it down to two, hopefully, we will still have some flexibility after you talk with all these community groups.
I think we're completely, we discussed it, you know, really quickly with Denise, whether to include application and project or just application. And I think either is fine. So
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that, with that word, or that, that's free, however that works. I think that does not impact what
Okay.
to apply.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Chandler?
I would certainly feel better about it if we took the word project out as well. I do have some concerns along the lines of Mayor Protem Fortune with including Parab and and the community in the discussion. But if if we're just moving forward to to support the application, I am okay with that. Supporting the project, I think, is 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 a big ask at this point, since we don't, there's a lot of moving parts that we don't, we haven't looked at yet.
Thank you. Denise?
Delane and Natalie and Becca, can you talk a little bit more about that site? Because I know that's one of the conversations that we had while we were talking is they, even if we say these top two, there is the opportunity when they come out to relook at those and really get Parab's input and the community's input at that point, correct? Okay.
Yeah, if if it's okay to address that question and also to mention, Mayor Protem, Nancy, you had, you'd asked about the chamber. Because things are moving so quickly, we've been very careful about making sure that nowhere in the application are we committing to a location because it's so important for us to engage the community. I only just today was able to talk with Leslie at the chamber about it. She thinks it's a great idea. I think she's intrigued as well, and together, we'll all be learning more about it. So this is really just the first of more conversations to come.
Other council members? Mr. Sherdy, do you have remarks on this or? Okay, all right. I guess, you know, my thoughts are that, you know, this is moving kind of kind of fast. I look at that, and I wonder if there's really $200,000 worth of value in in the project. It seems like a neat idea in some respects, but kind of I sit back and think about it for a little bit. And this also strikes me that it comes at a time when we are looking at a variety of projects. We have a library that needs money. We have the Hiawatha Gardens with an uncertain future, and the solution there would presumably need money. So I'm not too excited about adding something on, something else that's going to take take money out of the, out of the community. If it were coming from, say, UC Health or or some of these other groups, I mean, that's a different kind of animal. So I have that, I guess, kind of echoing Counselor Chandler's thoughts, applying for the application and going for it. I tend to be more okay with that, but but still, I'm kind of cautious and want to take a look at this. So I would be hesitant to endorse a project. So that's, that's my two cents on it. Counselor Wolf?
Yes, thank you. That's a really interesting point you made, Mayor, and I hadn't thought of that. And then it makes me think, well, I don't know that El Pamar would normally. Well, maybe El Pamar would give money toward the library. I just didn't know if this, if this, in fact, is going to maybe deplete some of our funding opportunity for these other projects. That might be shooting ourselves in the foot. But so I wasn't sure. I guess nobody really knows if the funding, you know, people who may be interested in funding this, if that would likely give them an excuse to not fund something else. That's a really good point, John. I'm not sure that, that's concerning.
Yeah, that that makes me worry a little. Thank you. Other counselors? Question? Counselor Chandler?
Well, so if we were to remove the under section one of the resolution, the word project, and it would read the Manitou Springs City Council supports the application by the Manitou Springs Art Council. Were we to be selected, then we could engage the community, Parab, and see if the community, if this is something that they want and they want to invest in. So I'm okay, I'm okay with that. I'm just not okay with putting a rubber stamp on the project itself. So that's where I am with it. I think that they put a lot of effort in, and it is a prestigious thing, and it, who knows, the community may come say, wow, this is the best thing since sliced bread, but we don't know that yet. So I'm certainly supportive of them, the Manitou Arts Council proceeding with the application piece.
Thank you. Counselor Wilbrook?
Thanks. I'm very, very positive about going forward with this application and all the deadlines that need to be met by Friday. I think that we can look at this as it moves along and figure out where it fits into our priorities. I will just speak personally to the fact to say thank you to the people that are working on this. This is a very exciting thing, I think, for Manitou. Thing isn't the right word, but you know what I mean. I'm a huge Keith Haring fan. I used to buy Keith Haring note cards every year. In the late eighties and early nineties, I did a lot of work on HIV and AIDS awareness. And I think that this is such a fit for Manitou. It really brings an awareness to so many things, arts, culture, just all kinds of things. And I think that in a post-COVID, which I'm going to go ahead and say post-COVID, because I'm not ever optimistic that we're going to get to post-COVID, is that it's an outside space that is disinfected by the sun every day. And it's not an indoor space that has to be closed during the next virus or whatever, potentially. I don't know that for sure, but I just want to say, wow, that we got picked for this is really a neat experience and an honor, I think, to Manitou. And I really appreciate the work that everyone has put forward on this. And I really think that I, and I'm hope, I really hope we make it to the next round and that we can have the engagement and deliberation about this, because I think notwithstanding huge budget issues, which I'm totally aware of, I really think this is just a really neat opportunity for us. And it's, you know, I always talk about how I really want us to embrace Manitou and all the things we say we are. And this is such a fit for that. And it just really makes me happy to see it. And I hope we go forward. And thanks, you guys, for doing the work on it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Can I just jump in for a second?
Go ahead, Delaine.
Yeah, if I could. Under Plan Manitou, which kind of gets lost, under the arts and culture are the reasons we love where we live, right? So this is one of the things, I think it's page 38, and under arts and culture and Plan Manitou, arts and culture are the reasons we love this. Manitou has a goal spelled out in in the plan to develop and promote diverse art and culture experiences that enhance our quality of life, improve our built environment, and support our local economy. You know, so over the deck, over the past decades, under the Rainbow Plan, Manitou has put together so many plans and supporting the arts, arts and culture, as well as fitness, are always mentioned in these plans. So this is an ideal project, again, that fits in not just with our character, but with with our goals, our long-range goals.
Counselor Chandler?
Well, I would go ahead and move that we pass Resolution 3520, a resolution in recognition and support for the Keith Haring Fitness Court Public Art Program and Project, amending section one to remove the words "and" project.
And out of the title as well?
Yes, yes.
Friendly amendment to include that. Yes.
I'll second that.
In a second. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, the motion is stated by Counselor Chandler. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Great. All right. Well, I guess you've got some late nights ahead of you, Becca, Natalie, and Delane, but good luck and go forward. Thanks for joining us tonight. All right. Thanks. So thanks for joining us tonight. All right. Thanks, everybody. Great. Okay, so that gets us to, uh, council correspondence. Do we, um, anybody want to start off? Uh, Counselor Wolf?
Thank you. Um, I'm thinking that Mountain Metro needs to hear from us also by December twenty-fourth regarding our future plans. Is that on the agenda?
It's on next week's agenda. Yeah. I've got for the work session.
Thank you. That's my only question.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Sure. Um, I went to your, a, um, meeting last week or two weeks ago, whenever. And, um, uh, the car wash and the Dylan Hotel are under contract. So not, not by URA, but, uh, so that's kind of, uh, interesting slash exciting development. Um, trying to think if there's anything else. That's, that's probably the biggest news out of the URA is what's going on there. So thank you. That's all I've got.
Oh, Nancy, don't go. Can you say what, what, do you know anything about, are they going to continue using it as a car wash or is it going to be?
Uh, I, I would defer, I, I don't know. I don't believe so. I, it's a different buyer and, um, I think that it's, since it's developed, you know, I stay out of development plans pre. That's something for the planning department to deal with. And just in case it comes back to us, I don't, I try to stay away from anything having to do with development. Does that make sense?
Well, sure. I just didn't know if it was going to be, you know, uh.
My sense is no, it'll be something very different.
A gas station?
I, I don't know. I don't know. It's just, it's just under contract now.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess the only thing I really have is, uh, with, with regard to the rest of the, uh, the month, um, what I'd like, propose that we take, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-second off and the twenty-ninth is a Tuesday. It's the fifth Tuesday. We normally would not meet. So if it would be acceptable to council, I propose that we just have a, a work session next week on the eighth and a regular meeting on the fifteenth. Um, and then take the twenty-second, uh, that's the week of Christmas and twenty-ninth, the week of Thanksgiving, of, uh, New Year's and take those two weeks off. Uh, and it looks like we can get the, the work we need to get done by the end of the year, done within that timeframe. So if there's no objections, we'll, we'll go with that schedule. Okay. So go ahead and make, uh, plans for the holidays. Mr. Bremner?
Yeah. Good to back to, uh, citizen correspondence. I, we discussed this with my email with the mayor and Denise, but, uh, I had a, um, discussion with Linda Morland about the Minnehaha Avenue and her concerns about the traffic on that street from the new, uh, proposed, uh, fire training facility. And she told me that she had several of her neighbors who were also concerned about it. And, um, so anyway, that's an issue that's reared. It's, uh, we had.
Okay. Yeah. And, and Mr. Bremner, I, we're trying to get a couple of answers on that, but with the holidays, it didn't move very quickly. So it's still a work in progress.
Can I just respond to that?
Yeah.
Um, so I am meeting with Planning and Fire next week and, um, getting an understanding of what has taken place and what needs to take place in the future to get the building, um, built in the training. So I will be responding to council once I pull together all that information so that you know where we are, what's happened and what we're doing to move this project forward.
Thank you, Denise.
Counselor Wolf?
Thank you. Um, this is a question for Jeff. Are we putting a lien against that property on Pawnee for the cost of demo and fencing and such?
I believe that's the, I believe that's the plan. Um, we haven't done that yet. I could ask Denise if we have the final costs and we can put that together.
And do I? Go ahead. Call correctly that they withdrew the foreclosure action? Is that right?
I believe so. I don't want to say that, um, a hundred percent, but that is the last I heard. Counselor Wolf, and yes, we do have the final. And Beck, I know is working on getting all that to, um, Mr. Parker, so we can get the lien on that. So yes, we will. Thank you.
Would we be, would we, Jeff, would we be prohibited for putting a lien on there once it gets sold, uh, if it gets transferred to a new buyer? Um, is there some kind of requirement that the new buyer be on notice or something?
Well, certain, uh, certain city liens take priority and they're automatic. I have to take a look to see if this is one of them. Uh, I believe a nuisance lien actually does take priority, but I need to take a look at this, at the statute on that. That's a good question.
Actually, I wasn't really asking about the priority, although that would have been a good question, but I'm asking, um, timing wise, if, if I'm an innocent buyer and I buy this and I don't know it's subject to a lien because there is no lien and then the lien gets, um, published, you know, the day after I buy it, wouldn't that be illegal?
It, it, it may or may not because some, some municipal liens actually, um, are considered to be automatic liens that don't actually need to be recorded. But, um, I got, it, it, and so I, I gotta take a look at the statute on that and, and it may or may not be one of those liens.
You can have an unrecorded lien against real estate?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Like for example, for water sewer charges, um, for certain abatement, um, charges, they actually can be, um, that have priority and that attached to the property without being recorded.
Oh, good. So we don't have to worry at all about the timing. We could just file that lien whenever you feel like it.
Well, we, we may need to worry about it. It's actually a really good question because I, I'm not sure if this is the lien that actually would take, would actually fall into that, um, that provision. So it's a good question.
It seems like it's going to transfer hands if it hasn't done so already pretty quick. You know, if the owner is this person who's a jail and all that, like it's gonna, I just didn't know if we were going to get stuck paying it ourselves or not being reimbursed if there was a timing problem, but it sounds like you're on it.
I think we're on it. And also I believe our notice was recorded against the property or notice of abatement. So they have notice.
Oh, very good.
And I think we just got the final last, at the end of last week or something, put the final bill on it. So I know Beck is on it and she'll be managing it, but yeah, we'll work on it. So thank you for bringing that up.
Great. Thank you. Um, further council correspondence. I guess not. Let's go ahead and move on to the city administrator's report. Mr. Chaney?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, Dole and I, uh, found out that we only had one nine-one-one call in November on the incline out of eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty-nine people. Uh, so we're, we're excited about that because we think the reservation system is helping, uh, pass the information on how to be safe on the incline. And then the attendants are helping in that area. So we're gonna, we're gonna go look back into last year and kind of see if we can pull up some more data on numbers and kind of see if we're dropping that number down. So I think that's an exciting thing. The Soda Springs Park, uh, phase one is being advertised now. It was approved by PPRTA. And we're hoping to start construction of Soda Springs Park, uh, in early, early next year. So that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise?
Um, I don't have any big updates except for, as you can imagine with COVID-19, trying to work with the chamber and with Becca and look how we can support businesses through this. And then again, looking at budgets, depending on how long we go. And if we go purple, we're going to have to start looking at what that looks like. So I'll be working with department heads tomorrow to talk about if we go purple, what does it look like and how do we make it manage through that? So that's where we are, is I'm really doing more budget right now and seeing what I can do to help the businesses.
Right. Well, thank you. We appreciate that, Denise.
Very good. Um, okay. Well, that brings us to the last item adjournment. Um, do we have a motion?
Oh, oh, I forgot one thing. Sorry, sorry. I forgot one thing. Tomorrow I do, or on Thursday I will have a guest column in the paper about, um, shopping local. Right? And really supporting our local community and our shops. And one of the things that I'm asking people to consider is to do takeout Tuesday. So if council would like to do maybe a takeout Tuesday tonight, I ordered from, um, the cake and got their berry salad, which is fabulous. And then maybe we could just all say where we ordered and what we got, if you feel like doing it. And it will just show support for our businesses. Um, so I'm starting to do takeout Tuesday.
We got a couple enthusiast remarks. Uh, let me, let me do Judith first and then we'll come back to Julie. Okay?
I'm sorry. I did want to mention one thing. I, I, I have grandma brain these days, but, um, so I'm meeting with Mary Ellen Montgomery on the eighth of December and we are going to finalize the residential tree planting form that we will put onto Alex to post. And COVID notwithstanding, we are moving forward with ordering trees or Mary Ellen, of course, you know, had that. And, um, planning on some tree planting next spring. So hopefully something to look forward to. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Goodness, thanks. Julie, did you have a?
Oh, well, it's kind of goofy. I don't know if I should say this publicly, but I will. I just thought, oh, you know how we were discussing whether we should be sanctioned for eating during the meetings? And I for one, um, usually get really hungry on Tuesday nights because I, I, it's, it's hard for me to pre-eat. So, uh, we could advertise, uh, the idea of, um, Tuesday takeout if we can all show the public exactly what we're eating and where we got it and how yummy it is. And maybe that would be free advertising and that way we can get away with eating without getting in trouble for being unprofessional. Just a thought.
That didn't, that wasn't in the SOP Julie. So you're safe. You can eat. You notice me, I'm always drinking. So.
Oh, we drink, but we don't eat that much because you know, it's not that professional. It was, even if we just did it as a one-time thing or something, I just thought if we can help promote the businesses through eating through our meetings.
Good. Yeah.
I, I don't think it hurt us for, for us to be a little bit lighthearted, a little bit silly when appropriate, when we get away with it. Little laughter wouldn't hurt the world.
Thank you. By the way, I really support the, if it's a motion, Mayor, or, or just a suggestion. I think it's a good idea if we could be willing to have longer other meetings to get those two Tuesdays off. You know how you said?
Yeah. Yeah. And I think it looks like next week's, uh, work session, there are some fairly, some topics that'll take a little bit of time. And then, um, the agenda on the fifteenth, I don't think the subject matter is that difficult. If we did have to spill something over onto the fifteenth from the eighth, we could. But I think if we get that stuff knocked out, that'd let us take a little break and we can come back fresh, uh, in January and, and go after, uh, the many things we want to get done. So that would be super. Okay, great.
I will say one of the goals next year is I would like for us to get to three meetings a month. So two regular meetings and one work session. That's what the code requires. And then the fourth one has just kind of happened. So I've talked to staff about if we can really manage what's coming up on the work session and pre-plan for those. Um, then it just allows for three, the two regulars and one work session. So if we can make it happen next year, that would be great. And if we can't, we can't put something to shoot for.
Great. Thank you. Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Counselor Wolf? And we have a second somewhere out there. Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thanks y'all. You have a good evening. Take care now. Stay safe.